Stand for the opening prayer will be given by Pastor Nathaniel Perkins Impact Church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Legions. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, for your wisdom and your support as we begin this meeting. Help the leaders of this city to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow this community to grow closer, that we continue to grow in influence in the Hampton Roads region. Father, we actually defile these leaders with your grace as they make decisions that will have a positive impact on the citizens of this great city and community for years to come. Father, may you bless their efforts with clear insight, bless their deliberations with wisdom, bless their work with clarity and accuracy, and bless their decisions with impartiality. Acts that you bless and protect our mayor, our city manager, our city council members, their support staff, each and every city leader present this evening, and the citizens of this great nation, I mean this great city, excuse me. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will call the roll.
Ms. Doyle?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here. The motion is to excuse Councilman Riddick.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna need excusing too before new business, but aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. The motion is to read the resolutions certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the Council of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Good evening. For the benefit of those who do not regularly attend the council meetings, the procedure we will take up first is to take up ceremony items. Next, we'll take up public hearings. Then the consent agenda in order as they appear on the docket. Any member who wishes to remove an item for the consent agenda, we will discuss it separately with any member of the public. After the consent agenda, we'll take up the regular agenda items in order as they appear on the docket. Upon the completion of the agenda, we'll take up any new business that come before the council. To address the council, you should have registered outside of the clerks, outside of the lobby prior to 7:00 PM. When your name is called, come to the podium, state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Clerk, how do you want?
Next item is to receive a bid pursuant to invitation for bids and notice of public hearing scheduled this day pursuant to state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to accept bids for a cable television franchise agreement with a term of 10 years in the city's right of way, subject to certain terms and conditions.
Mr. Clerk, how many bids have been received?
We have received one bid.
Please read that bid and mark it for identification.
Bear with me, this can take a while. The franchise also allows Cox to provide cable service throughout the city. The franchise term is for a period of 10 years. The franchise is non-exclusive. The franchise states that the city has the right to grant additional cable television franchises. Fee services. The franchise provides a list of public buildings entitled to receive complimentary cable service. Educational and government, known as EG channels. This franchise requires Cox to require to provide three EG channels in standard definition format. The city has the option to request high-definition format for the EG channels. Capital grant for EG programming. 90 days following the council approval of the franchise, Cox will collect a 70 cents per subscriber per month EG fee. No sooner than January 1, 2023, council may approve a one-time increase in the EG fee, not to exceed 30 cents per customer per month. A portion of the EG fee, 52 cents, will be provided to the entity specified by the city, and that amount shall be subtracted from the amount otherwise payable to the city by Cox. Upon written notice to Cox, the city may change the distribution amount of the EG fee. Franchise fee. Cox shall continue to comply with the provisions of the Communications Sales and Use Tax. If during the term of the franchise, the state allows cities to impose a franchise fee on cable operators, then the city may do so by requiring Cox to pay 5% of its gross revenues as a franchise fee to the city due 30 days following the end of each quarter. Customer service. The franchise mandates strong cable customer service standard. The franchise requires Cox to maintain a customer service office in the city of Norfolk. The franchise fee requires Cox to post a performance bond and a letter of credit to enable the city to enforce Cox's compliance with the franchise. And I'll note this as the Cox Television Franchise Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any additional bids offered? There are no additional bids. I declare the bidding closed. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this item? There's no member of the public who wishes to be heard on this item? I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a recommendation from the city staff regarding the bid received from Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC?
Yes, Mayor. City staff recommends that the bid by Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC be reviewed by city staff and a recommendation be made to council at your November 6, 2018 meeting.
Is there a motion to continue this matter until the next meeting of the city council on November 6, 2018 to receive the recommendations of the city staff and to consider the bid from Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC?
I submit.
I second the motion.
So any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, PH 1?
Public hearing was scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk on the application of the City Planning Commission for a zoning text amendment to Section 3.2.12. Uses for the residential base zoning districts. Section 3.3.9 uses for the commercial base zoning districts. Section 3.4.10 uses for the downtown base zoning districts. Section 3.5.7 uses for the industrial base zoning districts. Section 3.6.11 uses for the historic and cultural conservation base zoning districts. Section 3.7.13 uses for the special purpose districts. Section 4.2.3F, performance standards for all principal uses, standards specific to commercial uses. Section 4.3.3, performance standards for all accessory uses. Table 5.1.7D, motor vehicle parking design standards, minimum number of parking spaces. Table 5.1.9 bicycle parking, minimal bicycle parking standards. And Section 8.3.2, terms defined of the Norfolk zoning ordinance to allow short-term rental units, vacation rental, and short-term rental units, home stay within certain zoning districts, and to amend the performance standards for these uses. And the planning commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Brian Ehart?
I'm Brian Ehart. My mailing address is 810 West Ocean View Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. So I know in the proposal, there's a lot about short-term rentals, and I just want to come up here and kind of give a overview of what the future of short-term rentals are and the future of real estate. So when we think of short-term rentals, we're thinking of an apartment above the garage, you know, house next door. And that's kind of where we are now. But I think the framework that the zoning team proposed lays the ground for the future for Norfolk. Basically, short-term rentals allow us to do real estate in a different manner. So right now, we're able to use this technology to change the way we live, work, and play. We're also able to focus and change localities in ways we weren't able to do before. If we're looking at a certain market, so for me, I look at the Ocean View market. If we know Ocean View, there's seven miles of beautiful beaches that just got revitalized, brand-new homes being built. However, there's an epidemic of distressed apartment buildings in Ocean View. So through the use of short-term rentals, we're able to actually buy these buildings, upgrade them to the standard set in the coastal standard for, of East Beach, and make money on them. Now, if we were to do this with a long-term rental, we couldn't make our money back. It wouldn't be financially feasible. So that's why you're seeing a lot of these buildings still in their distressed state, still decrepit, annexed to beautiful homes. And so this is not a theory. If you drive down Ocean View, you see our buildings that are branded with Dune cottages, beach cottages. My company EF Capital buys those buildings. My construction company renovates them. And my management company is the first short-term-focused rental management company in Norfolk to manage these properties. And so what I'm saying is that I have a big background in it. And I think honestly what the zoning team has proposed is great for the future of Norfolk because now we're able to actually fix those properties. We're able to make them beautiful, and we're able to actually get issue properties changed for an area that's looking to change. One statistic that I pulled is, one of our properties is a 14-unit building. Over a six-month period, on average, for long-term rentals, there is about 43 police calls every six months. Since we've owned it, in the past nine months, we've had three. And our team is taking care of those on their own. The police got there, their service was taken care of. So not only on a crime level, but we're also able to put money back into these buildings and back into the area. And so really, the way this bill's regulations are proposed allows us to kind of jump towards the future, and I think actually above other cities, giving the understanding of short-term rentals to regulate them properly, use them for the city benefit, and use them to better the people.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Thank you for coming. I appreciate that. Assuming this passes tonight, I assume you're also going to make sure that you start paying the 8% transient occupancy tax?
Yes, so I actually have a meeting on Friday with the city, so.
Great.
No worries about that.
Thank you.
We've actually been holding it too.
$3.
For this.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Kate McCoy, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, Kate McCoy, 2040 East Ocean View Avenue, representing Ocean View again. I concur with the prior speaker. I think his building is the model for what a slum can turn into and actually be a fantastic beach rental in our community. I'm representing here tonight myself individually, having rentals, using Airbnb, using VRBO. I typically get three-month rentals and short-term nurses who come in. In the summertime, you want shorter. And I have a quality of tenant that you would just wish for. I mean, these people are fantastic. They're paying good money. They're very clean. They're very safe, and no police calls. I'm with him on that. As a Cottage Line board member, which is my second position here to represent Cottage Line Civic League, our board is in favor of this. Our members are in favor of this, and our councilmen have known this and have been working with us. We want to take that 8% tax. Everybody that I talk to who's doing it under the table now has been, like the prior speaker, collecting tax money. We want to give it to the city. We want you guys to give it back to us. We would like to make the strong case that a percentage of that money stay in Ocean View to take better care of our beaches, more trash patrols, just walking around and the things that the city needs to do that way. Street cleaning and the things that make our community beautiful. We are on 7.3 miles of beautiful beach, and only Caribbean islands usually can say that. We are amazing, and it's time to start taking advantage of that. I live next door to a slum that is a long-term rental. Somebody who lives in Virginia Beach rents out next to me. I think in the last month, there have been four police calls. When you turn that over and people start seeing that you can get better quality and no trouble, it's really a lifestyle change that I think Ocean View deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, call the roll. No ma'am.
Yes, I have an ordinance to amend the Norfolk zoning ordinance so as to permit short-term rentals within certain zoning districts and to establish operational regulations. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, PH 2?
Public hearing two is scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk on the application of the City Planning Commission for a zoning text amendment to Section 3.7.13. Principal accessory and temporary use table for special purpose districts to allow a continuing care retirement community to be permitted in the East Beach Harbor Special Purpose District by right. And by 5-0, planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
I have an ordinance to amend the Norfolk zoning ordinance so as to add continuing care retirement community as a use allowed in the East Beach Harbor zoning district. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, PH 3?
Public hearing three is scheduled this day under the state law. Notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk on an application of Kova Brewing Company for A, rezoning from residential coastal and community commercial to conditional community commercial. B, conditional use permit for production of craft beverages. And C, conditional use permit for live entertainment on property located at 9529 Shore Drive. That's two ordinances, Mr. Mayor. One, an ordinance to rezone property located at 9529 Shore Drive from residential coastal and community commercial districts to community commercial district. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I just wanted to recognize that the Batmans are here.
They're here.
Good people. They're doing a great thing for Ocean View, and we're really excited about what they're bringing in. When we do the Ward 5 tour in December, we'll show you some more of their plans. They won't be open then, so there won't be any beverages for us. But we appreciate your investment in Ocean View, and this is really exciting. And the Civic League's definitely supported it in that area. Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Public hearing four is scheduled this day under the state law. And public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk on an application of iconfigure.
Mr. Clerk, did you have two for on page three?
Didn't I?
Yes, you did, sir.
You're on top of it.
Mr. Clerk, I didn't call for page four.
I have an PH 3A.
Thank you, sir.
I have an ordinance granting conditional use permits to authorize the operation of a craft beverage production facility with live entertainment named Kova Brewing Company on property located at 9529 Shore Drive. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Mr. Clerk, PH 4?
Glad to, to offer you. Public hearing four is scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk on the application of iconfigure Inc. for a change of zoning to amend the profit conditions of property zoned conditional community commercial on property located at 2330 Ballantyne Ferry Road. And by a 5-0 vote, the planning commission recommends approval.
Call the roll.
I have an ordinance to rezone property located at 2330 Ballantyne Ferry Road in order to modify conditions on property zoned community commercial district. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. PH 5?
Public hearing five is scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments to amend the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia, known as SIPSa, Articles of Incorporation to delete the two-year term limit for SIPSa's Board of Directors who are appointed by member localities as per the approved 2018 Journal Assembly Legislation.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
I have a resolution approving and adopting amended and restarted Articles of Incorporation for Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, C1 through C9 will be considered in the block.
Dispense with the charter requirements for reading the ordinances and adopt the consent agenda. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Before I go, I just wanted to highlight C3, the infant. What?
Go back to it in a minute.
The Infant and Toddler Connections Program. This is a free service for any citizen in Norfolk that has a child under three. We were actually led onto it by our pediatrician because of some speech issues with my son. And they walked us through a whole process in connecting us with Norfolk Public Schools to do speech services. But they did an outstanding job. We were very impressed through the whole process. And it is available to anybody regardless of income in Norfolk. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. Good job to the staff there. Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, R1, motion to continue until November 20th?
Mr. Mayor, I have questions about this one. This was originally, we accepted, I think we had two invitations on August 28th. It's been two months. Why are we continuing this?
Mr. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, we had some more. We were, we're gonna be fine. We've had good conversation with all of the respondents, and we had to get some additional information this week. And candidly, by the time we had the agenda meeting, we didn't think we were gonna be ready. I think we could have forced it on tonight, but we didn't have a chance to socialize some of the issues.
So we'll see this.
So you'll see this.
The next.
I think it's your next meeting.
Okay.
We've been in conversation with the applicants.
We had a motion to continue it to the 20th. Would you like to change that to the sixth?
Let me look at Winter and Nikki. Can't find them in the crowd. Let's leave it on, let's leave it on the 20th if that's okay.
Okay, motions to continue to November 20th. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R2?
R2 is an ordinance approving the raw water sales agreement and approving the amended and restated water services contract.
LSW James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is LSW James. I reside at 2021 Kenlake Place here in the city of Norfolk. I would be very remiss if I let this item go by. Once again, Kristin Lentz has hit a home run. Each of you heard the presentation about the proposal of the water contract? I would remind you that Kristin Lentz is not only our excellent Director of Utilities, but she's the lady who headed up the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission's study on the future of water and our ability to have water, if I remember correctly. I just wanted to add my support for this particular item because it's a win-win, as she said, a win-win for the city of Norfolk as well as the city of Virginia Beach. And I can't imagine that anyone would not be able to see after listening to that presentation today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
I just want to take the opportunity also to thank Kristin and her team, the mayor and the manager, for making this happen. We have seen catastrophes and disasters across the country with water. And so we know how important quality water is. And so I just want to say thank you for making this regional effort happen. Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Team Norfolk. Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, P, R4? R3, I'm sorry. I'm gonna like you, Mr. Clerk.
R3 is an ordinance to approve amending the agreement regarding Hampton Roads sanitation district's responsibility for financing and implementing a regional wet weather management plan. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R4.
R4 is an ordinance approving a license agreement permitting the Hurrah Players, Inc. to enter upon and use city-owned property located at 485 St. Paul's Boulevard for the purpose of installation and maintenance of landscaping and for two existing signs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R5?
R5 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate an agreement in substantial conformity with the terms and conditions of the attached purchase and sale agreement for the purpose of purchasing certain property known as 731 Sedgwick Street in the city of Norfolk for the Ohio Creek Watershed Improvement Project, authorizing the purchase of the said property and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $185,000 for such purpose from funds heretofore appropriated.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R6?
R6 is an ordinance approving a second amendment to the lease between the city of Norfolk as landlord and the Muddy Paws Grooming and Retail Store LLC as tenant, and authorizing the city manager to execute the second amendment to lease on behalf of the city of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R7?
R7 is an ordinance vacating and releasing portions of two drainage easements over property owned by Breezy Point Apartments Limited Partnership located at 8600 Glen Merle Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R8?
R8 is an ordinance granting a development certificate to permit the use of the ground floor for residential use with waivers on property located at 117 to 119 West Tazwell Street. And by 5-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Mr. President, that's all I have.
So have you half, Mr. Manager, you have anything? All right, now we're gonna go into new business. When your name is called, please come to the podium.[1591.10] the podium, state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Mrs. Graves, you are excused.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smigel, I want you to come back.
I'll come back.
All right. Uh, the first speaker is Delegate LGT Howell. Welcome, Delegate Howell.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, other members of the council. My name is LGT Howell, Jr. I reside at, uh, 859 Benwood Road, Norfolk, Virginia. Uh, this is not exactly a a complaint because I spoke with the mayor a week or so ago about this. He's aware of this, but I felt that it would be good, after having attended the Civic League meeting last week, and we do have some members here. Would you please stand? Thank you. Uh, this, I came to Norfolk 48 years ago. And, uh, my concern is a policy that we have here in Norfolk that I would like for you, if you would, to consider changing. It has to do with, um, waste management, the site up off of Ballantyne Boulevard. I've talked with a number of people that I represented, uh, when I was in the House of Delegates, that lived in this district, and they are as much concerned as we are. Uh, I took some trash up to Ballantyne, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and as far as I could get was on Ballantyne Boulevard turning in. I sat there in my vehicle, uh, one hour before I could get up to the weigh-in station. During that time, of course, my engine was idling, and you know how expensive gas is. But, uh, we were able to unload that. I had some other trash a week later. You know, we can only dump there on Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, but in Suffolk, you can dump every day. So I took this trash and drove to Suffolk, went through the tunnel, didn't mind paying the toll. When I pulled up to the station there, it took me exactly five and a half minutes to get past the lady that was at the weigh-in station, go inside and unload the the, the, the materials that I had. Uh, this is, uh, inconvenient for the people living in Ingleside, not only in Ingleside, but any other area in the city that wants to keep our city nice and clean. Now, on my street, uh, we have a lady just back of me, bless her heart. She's been in, uh, the hospital for three weeks. She's in a coma. She had a lot of pine straw and those other things that goes along with the pine straw in her yard. I went out and raked it up myself, put it in bags, six of them, as a matter of fact, to take to the dump. It would have been much easier for me to have just backed my old truck up there and put it in the back of my truck and loaded it up and carried it away. There's other debris, Mr. Mayor, on my street now. There's only, uh, eight houses on that street that's out in the street. If this rule was not in effect, I would back my vehicle up there, load that up, and take it up to the dump in order to keep our city looking beautiful. I'm sorry I went over. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate. Delegate, uh, Cheryl Turpin.
Good evening. Good to see you all. Um, I am Delegate Cheryl Turpin. I live at 4508 Willacross Drive in the city of Virginia Beach. I represent the 85th House District. But today, I am here as a high school science teacher. I am here as the Gay Straight Alliance sponsor. I have supported our gay straight students in my school for many years now. We have created a glisten space, which is a safe space for students. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Hershey. And Hershey is a safe place. It's a safe place. It's been a safe place for a very, very long time. Again, I'm here to speak on behalf of students, and students, as they get older, they have safe places to feel included. And Hershey's been around for 35 years, and it needs to be considered a sacred space. It needs to be considered a safe zone for all, um, young people. And I'm just here to say, please, you know, I'm here to support Hershey and and their endeavors. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Delegate. Rebecca Carey.
Good evening, Councilman, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Rebecca Carey, and I'm a resident of Norfolk at 3546 Hewitt Drive. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Equal Rights Amendment over the ERA. Along with fellow supporters, our goal is to have Norfolk and the surrounding cities pass the ERA resolution so that when the State General Assembly convenes next year, we can show there is strong statewide support for Virginia to be the 38th and final state needed to put true equal rights for all, regardless of gender, in the U.S. Constitution. Not just a law that can be easily repealed or altered, but an actual constitutional amendment to establish quality equality for all human beings. In an increasingly polarized and volatile political climate, we are presenting a resolution that brings positivity and has strong bipartisan support. This resolution is just a small piece of a legacy that is decades in the making. We are asking that you pass this historical resolution and do your part in furthering equal rights for all. I understand that you are aware of the need to have this passed before the General Assembly convenes in January. However, I would urge expediency so that the city of Norfolk can lead the way in encouraging the sister cities to pass this resolution as well. We are working to get not just the sister cities of Hampton Roads to pass this, but cities all across the state, just to show how strong the support is for this movement. I hope we can all agree that equal rights, regardless of gender, has waited long enough. Um, and just to read an example of, um, how the, uh, lack of the Equal Rights Amendment has affected actual people. Uh, in 1982, Lola Kuba lost her case against Allstate Insurance Company. She and her colleagues were doing the exact same job, but her guaranteed minimum salary was $825 a week, while their guaranteed minimum salary was $1,000 a week. Allstate argued successfully that it was not discriminatory to pay Kuba less because she had been earning less in her prior job than her male colleagues had earned in their prior jobs. Her lower prior salary was found by the court to be a factor other than sex, one of the exceptions in the Equal Pay Act and Title 7 of the Civil Rights Act, which prohibit wage discrimination on the basis of sex. And relying on this case in 2013, a court dismissed the same claim by Tracy Rexrope, who worked for the Arizona Department of Education, where she earned $17,000 a year, less than her male colleagues. Um, in addition, in 2001, the Supreme Court ruled that Tuon Nguyen was subject to deportation from the U.S. after he was convicted of a criminal offense. Nguyen, born in Vietnam to a Vietnamese mother and an American father, did not have a lifelong right to U.S. citizenship, which he would have had if he had been born to an American mother. Despite the efforts of his father, who had raised Tuon as a single parent in the U.S., the Supreme Court upheld the law that gives American fathers lesser rights to confer citizenship on their American children than American mothers have. Thank you.
Rebecca, I just want you to, uh, know that, uh, next meeting, which is November the 6th, uh, we will be voting, uh, on the resolution. It's in drafting, and I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman McClellan for, uh, just getting it expedited. But it will, uh, be distributed to all the members, and I believe there's a consensus, um, and we will have it on, uh, the docket on November the 6th.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Election Day, November 6th?
The Election Day, November 6th.
There's a meeting?
Right now, there's, there's scheduled a meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Catherine Fletcher. Catherine Fletcher, uh-huh.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm Catherine Fletcher. I reside at 6101 Powhatan Avenue in Norfolk. Um, I'm also here with Rebecca as a member of Indivisible 757. Um, uh, Councilwoman McClellan was generous enough to review the draft resolution, and you are generous enough to be considering it. Thank you for that. Um, I wanted to share tonight why I personally am a member of the committee that drafted the resolution. I am concerned, uh, first, about job-related issues American women face. Uh, there's, of course, equal pay for equal work. Uh, next, paid maternity leave. The United States is the only industrialized nation not to mandate paid leave for mothers. Uh, too many families take on significant debt or turn to public assistance after around, around the birth of a child. Um, I've watched it happen to my friends. Uh, the ERA could make it more difficult for employers to discriminate against mothers and families. Secondly, health care for American women. With all the tinkering with the health care legislation, many women, including me, um, have had their access to services limited, uh, including but not limited to contraception, cancer screening, and preventative services, and post-sexual assault services. Uh, the ERA could prevent insurers from treating women's health care issues differently than men's. Thirdly, uh, there's violence against American women. The Me Too movement is now a year old. You know the stories. You know the statistics. As a society, I believe we can and should do better for victims. We need a new and different instrument to ensure that women receive fair, just, swift treatment under the law, and the ERA could provide that framework. Finally, I am a writer and an arts administrator with over 20 years' worth of experience in the field of arts and education. During my time in this field, I've been involved in several groups which advocate for human rights at home and abroad. Too often these days, I read and write the sentence, "Women's rights are human rights." It's the 21st century. We're an industrialized nation. This should be obvious to everyone. Unfortunately, it's not. The passage of the Equal Rights Amendment could pave the way for many other needed reforms in our laws and our society. Please make sure those of us who identify as female continue to be included in the conversation. Thank you very much for considering our resolution.
Thank you. Latisha Latham.
How you all? How you doing again? Uh, my name is Latisha. I reside at 1354 Kenton Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. Um, this is my third time here. Um, I'm here because of the 12-year-old boy that was ran over um, at the intersection of Princess Anne and, um, Majestic Avenue. Um, I'm just here just kind of like following up. I had spoke with Mr. James Rogers, the deputy, um, city manager, and Mr. Rogers did explain that Department of Mobility, um, in their efforts to adopt, um, Vision Zero, um, by performing roadway safety analysis, you know, around the city of Norfolk. And I'm here to learn, you know, like, what is the budget for Vision Zero and how soon, um, will it be in place? And I've also learned about, um, the Community Development Block Grant. And I'm sure you all know what it is, but just in case some people don't know what it is, um, it provides a flexible source of funding to develop viable urban communities by providing decent, affordable housing, creative, suitable living environments, and expanding economic opportunities for low and moderate, um, income persons. Um, the objective set by Congress is to aid to prevent or eliminate slums and, um, be light, benefit low and moderate income persons, and meet the community development needs in an urgent situation. Um, as far as Mr. Rogers was explaining to me, um, as far as like the fiscal year and all that stuff for like 2019 and 2020, um, I'm just hoping and just here to see if maybe the, the annual funds for the grants could be considered, um, as far as Vision Zero, as far as getting, um, the traffic light up and doing, you know, more work as far as in the area, um, just to prevent, um, things happening. What I passed around to you was that Tuesday after we had the city hall meeting, that Friday, that accident happened, and somebody knocked down the inner, the stop sign at the intersection where, you know, I'm advocating to see about getting the traffic light. So the photos that you see, which I did email, um, Ms. Counsel, uh, Mamie Johnson, I just love saying your name like that. I just think that's so cool. And, um, Mr. Mayor, um, Alexander, um, so we can see how, why we need that traffic light. Um, you see, it was an accident. Um, thank God, you know, nobody lost their life, and if you could see the accident, you could see if somebody was sitting on the passenger side, either in the front or the back, it would have been very severe. You know, somebody probably could have lost their life. Um, so again, I'm here to see about getting that traffic light up, and thank you so much. You all have a great day.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Latham, I want to partner you with Michelle Johnson because you asked some, you need, you, you asked about what, what is the CBDG and some other things. So Michelle, raise your hand back in the back. We're gonna get you someone that could mentor you, work with you over neighborhood, so you can learn more about some of the questions that you're asking, okay?
Perfect.
See Michelle Johnson in the back.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, have a good day.
Bye-bye. Uh, Jay Vega. You say it again. Jay, I'm sorry. Jay Vega? Tell these people who's next, because we'll be here all night. Followed by Jason Lawyer, after Jay. Welcome.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Um, we just had a, a question.
Please state your address, sir, for the record.
Yes, sir. Um, it's for the, um, permitting process through, um, the Health Department for the city of Norfolk for, uh...
Please state your address, sir, your address.
Oh, address. I'm sorry. I thought you said interest. Address. Uh-huh. Sorry about that. It's 4952 Admiration Drive.
Yes, sir.
Virginia Beach, Virginia.
Okay.
All right. Um, so we're here today to get some clarification. Um, we just wanted to know, um, why the permit to operate a professional tattoo and art studio is significantly higher than any other similar business in the city, including those that are regulated by the exact same state agencies where, um, and guidelines that we are. Um, it's, it's, it's a very, very huge, um, margin between similar businesses and ours.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Manager, who would you like to assign him to?
James Rogers.
James Rogers, sir, gentleman right there, sitting on the cooler, the radiator. See James Rogers.
Awesome.
Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you, council.
Jason Lawyer.
I just wanted to continue part of that. My name is Jason Lawyer. I'm the owner of Commonwealth Tattoo Gallery on Granby Street, 804 Norfolk, Virginia. And, um, with that being said, I've done my research. I've owned other tattoo studios in different states, including Georgia. This is my first one in Virginia. Um, and I know that you have to pay for certain things, um, to operate a business, one being the Health Department. That's one of our major concerns as a business owner, is that we want to offer the safest procedures. Um, I don't mind paying to play ball, but when I have to pay, my permitting is $1,800, and anyone else that has to be permitted, whether it be a restaurant pays $40 for a health permit, a barber shop pays $50. Tattoo shops pay $1,800, and that is, I think, discriminative. So that's why we're bringing this to the council's attention, and we want to see what we can do to level the playing field for us to operate as a successful business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mike McKenna.
Sorry, I've been drafted out of retirement.
Mike, it's good to see you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Michael McKenna. I live at 3124 Douglas Road in Chesapeake, Virginia. I'm here tonight in representation to the members of the Norfolk Police Union and the citizens of Norfolk. I'm retired, 35-year veteran of the Norfolk Police Department. I'm also elected, uh, Vice President of the Eastern Virginia Labor Council and elected member of Virginia State Democratic Committee. I'm here tonight to respond to the concerns of Norfolk police officers and citizens of Norfolk. The police department, as I have been told, is extremely shorthanded. I almost, I was also told the city will lose up to seven, between 70 and 80 officers in about two months due to the drop program. This will cause a tremendous shortage of public safety officers in Norfolk. When the 12-hour shifts were implemented about five years ago, it was promised that sectors would be staffed by at least five officers per shift per sector. Currently, there's only two officers per shift, per sector. I'm now informed that each sector may only have two cars and two officers assigned to it. I just visited my doctor, and she, uh, confirmed that her son had just been released from field training officer as an Norfolk police officer, and he had to respond to the night shift, along with one other officer on a 12-hour shift. This is a serious safety situation when you only have two officers working in a sector that large. Uh, there's many officers and supervisors that fill civilian jobs that could be used to assist citizens that would be better assisting the street officers in handling calls for service. The chief has not met with the elected members of the Employee Relations Committee for over a year. If he had, maybe these issues would have been addressed before I had to come here. I will continue to address the council on these matters until a solution is reached. These are only some of the serious issues that police and fire face today. Please remember that these are not my observations, but patrol officers' observations that have asked me to intercede for them and bring these serious life-threatening situations to your attention. I do not hold the council accountable for these issues, for I know if they had been aware, accidents would have been taken a long time ago. Officers request that city council conduct an inquiry of these issues and substantiate them and take the corrective actions. I just want to say, I do support the, uh, people that are here in support of the Hershey's Lounge. I was police officer for 35 years, and they started in 1984, and I can tell you right now, I never had to respond to any serious calls or even any arrests at Hershey's Lounge. I even ate lunch there. So, thank you.
Uh, Danny Lee Gin. Staney.
My name is Danny Lee Gin. I reside at 3844 Dare Circle. Uh, and in my try, in my journey over the last 10 years to get an answer to two simple questions, uh, I had an opportunity to sit down and talk with each one of you, which I appreciate very much. Uh, but the, one of the most revealing was talking to Teresa Wibley. Uh, she was very forthcoming to me because she only had two weeks left on the council. And in our discussion, she dropped two bombshells on me that kind of surprised me because I've been asking for 10 years, where do you stand on bullying within this chamber and towards council members and towards citizens? Where do you stand in regards to racism in this council and towards citizens? And she told me, uh, very honestly, she says, Danny, uh, in the case of Paul Riddick, we have gone to Paul Riddick personally behind closed doors, and we have addressed our concerns in regards to his behavior. Uh, that was very surprising to me. I did not even know that you had addressed the issue. But you addressed it behind closed doors so that none of us know what you're saying. If you do your business behind closed doors, we, as part of the public, have no idea of what you're doing. So that surprised me quite a bit, that at least some of you were concerned enough to address the issue behind closed doors. She also, uh, told me, uh, not only did you do that, but that she suggested that you have a vote, a 90-second vote of no confidence, uh, in regards to racist and bullying behavior. That surprised me. I've been, uh, asking that for 10 long... I've been asking that for 10 long years. But she said, in turn, she was voted down. Now, I don't know if it was the Frame Council that she was addressing or the Alexander Council, but she said she was voted down by the council members, again indicating that she at least wanted to have a vote, if nothing else, just to get rid of Danny. But again, all I run into is silence. I'm never referred to anybody in the government. You never address the issues. You sit there in a wall of silence unless you want to address the issue. The wall of silence isn't doing you any good. I've been here for 10 years, and as old as I am, I'm still willing to be here for another 10.
Okay, we'll come back to John.
I don't know exactly how to put this, but I'm already speaking with one of the deputy city managers about this issue, so if I can just table it till maybe the next meeting, if it doesn't work out, but I'm confident that he'll be able to get it taken care of.
Thank you, sir. And Jennifer Alomar, please get in the queue. Welcome.
I'm Sandra Pryor. I'm from Hampton, Virginia, and I teach women's history and Virginia history at Old Dominion University, and I'm here to support the Hershey Bar. And I understand the issues, and I'm hoping that a way could possibly still be found to keep it open because it has value as a historical structure, as a place of community service, and also as a model for other parts of the state and even for the country, and it may be the oldest existing LGBTQ bar on the East Coast. And I support it for its historical importance, its community importance. I'm not even a member of that community, but I think it is something that is, something needs to be considered to show what is important in this community in terms of value and diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Alomar. Followed by Annie Andrews.
So whoever the next speaker is, there's open seats up here if you want to come up.
That's Annie Andrews.
Get ready.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jennifer Alomari. I live in Chesapeake, Virginia. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I actually didn't have anything prepared. I stopped by the Hershey Bar tonight to pick up a friend to bring here. And while I was waiting for her, I sat down at the bar and was talking to the bartender, Bert. She's been a bartender there for 33 years of the 35 it's been open. Billy, one of the owners, he was fixing a light. And I sat there, and I started counting the tiles on the ceiling, memorizing the bubbles painted on the walls. I ran my hands along the bricks on the wall, making a mental scrapbook, if you will, of the bar, as it is. We've been coming to you, week after week, since the 26th of June, and I appreciate, we all do, you've taken the time to listen to our stories. We've been trying to get you to understand that this is so very much more than a bar. The memories that those walls hold, the women that came before us, that fought for us to be able to hold the seats that we sit in today, and as it gets closer to the 31st. Can't imagine not being able to walk through those doors. And I would just ask one more time, please, if there is anything you can do, if there is any way you can find it in your hearts, to help us, please.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Andrews, followed by T. Barcell.
I'm glad to meet all of y'all. My name is Anne Andrews. I'm a resident of Hampton. I live at 4401 Erickson Drive in downtown Hampton. I'm coming here as a support for Hershey Bar, as probably quite a many other people in here are. And I noticed in your agenda, it says you can ask them to stand, but I figured I'll save time. They know who they are, and you know who they are. I really urge you to give this bar a chance, to give it some more time. It seems to me, because I sort of came late to this discussion, not late to the bar, the first time I went to it was probably 30 years ago, when it first opened, but when I was married with three kids. But I have friends that there, I have family that are there, and it has been a very important place. I have worked teaching social work and diversity studies in Hampton Community Colleges for years and in North Carolina. And I know the importance of that topic and how we show respect, and I think that there's a sense that y'all don't care, and that's just because it seems that there was a done deal with no opportunity to see where it was going to go. And I am a firm believer in doing what you need to do to improve your city, but I can't see that here. And I will tell you, there are things in Hampton I can't see either. But what I would like to do is urge you to give us more time, to listen to us, to show us some respect, and to understand that the history and the background of this bar is well beyond just another bar in Hampton, or in Norfolk, sorry. Because it's been around for 30 some odd years. It's the oldest bar, lesbian bar, in Virginia. It may be the oldest lesbian bar on the East Coast. I've even heard rumors it may be the oldest one in the United States. It has history, it has value, and I think if you really honor your city and the city and the people in it, you would recognize and be sympathetic to that and understand what that might mean. The girl who came before me really hit upon what it feels like, and I respect her for I don't know much else to say, other than I beg you to please give us more time, if that's the only thing you can. I wish there was a little more understanding of what was going on, but I don't hear that right now. And I'm glad to be here because maybe I'm learning how to be a politician, I don't know. But thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. T. Barcell, followed by Christopher Bowler.
Good evening. My name is T. Barcell, and I'm a resident of Norfolk, residing at 104949th Street, and I'm here to support the Hershey Bar. The State of the Region Report from 2016 reads that between October 2014 and August 2015, 3,600 apparent LGBTQ marriage certificates were filed in Virginia, 839 of which were issued in Hampton Roads. Overall, the cities of Norfolk and Virginia Beach have seen the greatest absolute number of LGBTQ unions in the Commonwealth since the 2014 ruling went into effect. LGBTQ people live here, work here, get married here. We deserve to be heard. The existence of the Hershey Bar is historically significant as the oldest lesbian bar on the East Coast. Gay and lesbian bars like the Hershey Bar acted as safe spaces for LGBTQ people to congregate and organize for our rights, despite suffering from targeted discrimination and unjust raids from police. Without places like the Hershey Bar, LGBTQ rights would not be where they are today. We would not be able to marry the ones we love if it were not for the activists who fought for us by coming together in these spaces. The Hershey Bar is still thriving and bringing in business after 35 years. To level it for the sake of obtaining land that the city has no current plans for is senseless. For many LGBTQ folks here in Norfolk, it is difficult to not see this as an act of targeted homophobia. The fact that the city of Norfolk does not want to protect such a significant part of LGBTQ history is disappointing at best, especially considering how vulnerable the LGBTQ population is. To tear down such a historically significant lesbian bar in favor of future gentrification, though it may not be intended to, is indeed an act of violence against the LGBTQ community. Thank you for your time.
Krista Brandt, followed by Eric Brooks.
My name is Christopher Bowler. My address is 7846 Azalea Garden Road. I'm here in support of the Hershey Bar. State and local government employees' sexual orientation and gender expression are protected under law, but not private sector employees. If Hershey Bar closes, the staff will be forced to look for employment in an already volatile market. Some may even be forced to go back in the closet to ensure job security after being out for more than 35 years. I highly urge that city council tries to find a way to rectify this issue. Thank you for your time.
My name is Eric Brooks. Address is 858 West 43rd Street, Norfolk, Virginia, and I'm here on behalf of Hershey Bar also. I don't have any cool statistics or anything, but I've been to Hershey Bar, and I've been to a lot of places. I lived in Japan for a little bit for studying abroad. I lived in DC most of my life, and then I moved here to Norfolk for school. And all those places take like, you know, adjustment periods to get used to. And I've been to Hershey Bar for the first time, and I instantly got comfortable, and I sort of understand what's going on here, and I just think at most, extension of some sort is feasible, and I hope you guys consider that. Thank you.
Krista Brandt, followed by Kathleen Casey and Anne Casey.
Good evening. My name is Krista Brandt. I live at 3905 Creek Street in Norfolk, Virginia. I am a woman, a wife, a mother, a veteran, a student, and a Norfolk community member. When I first set foot in Hershey Bar, I knew that it was special. In my 11 years as a Navy veteran, active duty, I have never felt so accepted in my life as I did in that bar, and I'm straight. I cannot fathom the number of people that have sought solace and acceptance within the walls of Hershey Bar, especially my fellow service members, over the last 35 years. The history that those walls have witnessed and the people that they have sheltered are just as much as part of this community as I am and deserve protection, not destruction. After this pillar in the community is forced to vacate, I wonder if the silence that we are greeted with, the silence that cascades these city council chambers, will be louder than the deafening sounds of bulldozers and wrecking balls decimating the land that was once Hershey Bar. Will I still be free to be me, and will those behind me? Or will this 35-year promise fall short of historic preservation? Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Casey.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Dr. Kathleen Casey, and I'm a professor of history and gender studies at Virginia Wesleyan University. I want to begin by acknowledging that you may think with recent legal victories, particularly with regard to access to marriage, that LGBTQ people are more accepted in America than ever before. You might therefore conclude that sacred queer spaces like the Hershey Bar are no longer necessary, but you would be wrong in doing so. History does not move in a linear fashion. Things don't just get automatically better, and democratic institutions don't just continue to bring more people into the fold. For months, your LGBTQ constituents have been mustering up the courage to tell you in a televised public meeting, where their names and home addresses will be published, that they feel left out of this process. They've been telling you how important Hershey is, and they've shared with you how often LGBT people are harassed, assaulted, and forced to create their own families out of thin air when they are disowned. And a scholar, Dr. Marie Cartier, argued last week at an event at Old Dominion University, lesbian bars have often functioned not just as watering holes, but as homes, schools, and churches. Lesbians across the country have created and sustained these spaces and put themselves at great risk in order to do so for many decades. As renowned lesbian historian Dr. Lilian Faderman has argued, lesbians have, quote, "tolerated the smallest crumbs and the shabbiest turf in their desperation for a place," and that has been periodically taken away whenever the majority community wanted to make a show of its high moral standards. But in their determination to establish some area, however minute, where they could be together as women and as lesbians they were pioneers, they created a lesbian geography despite slim resources and unsympathetic times, end quote. Council members, we still live in unsympathetic times. Despite or perhaps because of ongoing discrimination, lesbian bars continue to be central to lesbian existence and resistance. According to historians Elizabeth Kennedy and Madeline Davis, quote, "By finding ways to socialize together, lesbians ended the crushing isolation of lesbian and sexist oppression and created the possibility for group consciousness and activity." By forming a community in a public setting outside of the protected and restricted boundaries of their own living rooms, lesbians have been able to struggle for public recognition and acceptance. This is no less true today, and it's why women have been coming here for months pleading with you not to destroy this historic space. I ask you to offer Ms. Stone an extension and to form an LGBTQ advisory council that can provide valuable insight on these issues moving forward. I hereby volunteer to serve on such a council.
Anne Creasy, Anne Creasy, followed by Teresa Dunleavy.
Hi, I'm Anne. I live at 112 West 34th Street, and I am here to speak on behalf of the Hershey Bar and support of it. Right now, I feel powerless, and I'm sure a lot of people in this room potentially do, especially at the federal level, the amount of attack that transgender people are facing right now, that compounded with the closing of Hershey Bar on October 31st will be extremely dangerous and destructive to the emotional and mental health of LGBTQ people in this community. So I think that as a city council, you have the opportunity to show that you want to ally with your constituents and support them and not abandon them. So whether that involves an extension or an alternative redevelopment plan that provides a space for these people, I think that it is important that you do that because otherwise you are petting yourself against this community potentially. And I know that you don't want to do that and that the city and the people here don't want to feel that way. So, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Teresa Dunleavy, followed by Jennifer Fish. Teresa Dunleavy, followed by Jennifer Fish.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Teresa Dunleavy. I live at 124 Orchard Street, Ward 2. And I'm here to speak about the pipeline. I know you're probably sick to death of it, but last week I attended a panel discussion sponsored by the 757 Pipeline Safety Coalition concerning the pipeline being built through the city of Norfolk. The panel consisted of Don Dever, an expert in pipeline safety from Texas, and Dr. Joe Bouchard, former Navy captain who commanded the Norfolk Naval Station and is an expert on national defense and homeland security. The information shared by the panel was very troubling, and I am here tonight to express my concerns. I was pleased to read in the Virginian Pilot since then that the Navy finally is being involved in the evaluation of the dangers the pipeline may present, and I am encouraged that the city is waiting to hear what they have to say on the issue. I was astounded that the Navy was never brought into the discussion before construction of the pipeline began. Virginia Natural Gas told the city it was building a distribution line. Distribution lines do not pose the danger of transmission lines, because the PSI pounds...
Pounds per square inch. Pounds per square inch.
Pounds per square inch, thank you. Momentary loss there. Is much lower, .6 to 200 PSI. We have thousands of miles of pipeline, and that's about what the PSI is in our city right now. But Virginia Natural Gas is not building a distribution line. They are building a transmission line, which will operate at 1,250 PSI and poses a much greater threat. Why did Virginia Natural Gas misrepresent the type of pipeline it would install? Transmission lines are usually used for interstate transport. Does Virginia Natural Gas have any intentions they haven't revealed? For example, shipping gas overseas? In a recent news broadcast, President of Virginia Natural Gas, Jim Kibler, refuted safety concerns. He said the pipeline will be buried 80 feet below ground, which is 20 times more than federal law requires. Secondly, he said they are exceeding federal requirements on steel strength and installing remote control shut-off valves, which isn't required by federal code, amazingly. The pipeline is only being buried three feet deep, and given the amount of pressure in the line, any small damage to it will create a fireball the likes of which Norfolk has never experienced. Do I need to stop?
You can finish your thought, but you need to conclude.
One backhoe driver digging in the wrong spot could kill many, many citizens. Also, being buried only three feet deep makes it an easy target for any terrorist activity. And given that this city is home to the largest naval base in the country or in the world, any rupture of this pipeline will not only endanger our citizens, but national security as well.
Thank you, Ms. Dunleavy.
That's it? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Jennifer Fish.
Mr. Manager, is it well-known with people that are contacting us that you have consultants that are looking into this?
Let me say that... Am I on here? So I think what Ms. Smigels is referring to is the fact that the city has hired two independent consultants outside, engineers, to take a look at the concerns that have been raised, particularly by the folks over at Kalana. And so I would say to you that there is a lot of misinformation out there, and so we want to be clear that folks outside our organization take a hard look at every issue that's raised, and then we will share those results with the council and with the community. Thank you. Thanks.
Jennifer Walcom, followed by Melissa Fisher.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jennifer Fish. I reside at 40 Radar Street, and I am a professor at Old Dominion University. I'm a social scientist, and I've been working on social policy for the past 20 years in the United States and at the United Nations. Among many, tonight I'm here to support the Hershey Bar. For the past 10 years, I've chaired the Department of Women's Studies at Old Dominion University, and that is the longest-standing public university to host a women's studies department in the state of Virginia. I'm here to express the significance of the Hershey establishment for our entire community, the east coast region, and even the nation as a whole. Hershey is not simply a lesbian bar for queer women. It is a dedicated and extremely symbolic space that holds such an important legacy throughout Hampton Roads. It's a safe space, a space for music, a space for cultural expression, and it's even held spiritual gatherings. We've hosted hundreds of dialogues at the Hershey Bar, and these dialogues bring people together across lines of difference, including race, class, gender, sexuality, just to name a few. To redevelop this site without integration of a new space for Hershey would be to silence the voices of so many citizens who benefit from the knowledge that Hershey exists, even if they don't attend that space themselves. This potential is particularly painful in this existing national context, where so many are speaking out so strongly against exclusion, harassment, and sexual violence. We ask you to support the safest space for women in Hampton Roads. We support a new vision for this geographic space, but we hope that that vision will include a vital space that will honor its history. Our hope is that the redesign of this complex could become a venue that would serve as a celebration of so many forms of diversity and a model for social inclusion. Right now at Old Dominion University, we're documenting Tidewater's queer history under the leadership of Kathleen Rhodes, and we hope that your city council will be archived as the one to create a new form of space and partnership between private and public constituents in order to preserve this sacred site of social inclusion. Thank you very much.
My name is Melissa Fisher. I live at 5817 West Leon Drive in Virginia Beach, 23455. I'm here to speak on the Hershey Bar. I wanted to speak about a slightly more personal note for me. When I was 13, I was outed for being gay to my parents, and when they found out, I was beaten, had my life threatened. I was kicked out of my house for a period of time. Upon coming back, I was not allowed to leave the house for any reason except to go to school, and this continued for the remainder of that school year. After that school year, during that summer, I was sent away from my family under the guise of going on a family vacation to visit another part of our family. And I was told I would come back at the end of the summer, that my mother just didn't want to be around me. And at the end of the summer, she canceled my plane ticket to come back and be with my brother and my father and also with her, and I missed the first month of my sophomore year of high school. I almost wasn't able to graduate because of this. The only reason that I came out of high school and did not end up committing suicide is because I was able at that time to have a space of other LGBT people in my high school where we could communicate, and I could talk about what I was going through and what I was dealing with and what it felt like feeling so ostracized. I know you've heard over the past several meetings about people literally making families out of thin air, and that is what I had to go through as a 13-year-old. My experience is frustrating, obviously, still troubling for me. But I am not alone in this experience. There are thousands of other gay women in Virginia, in the United States, and significantly more around the rest of the world who experience similar rejections from their family. And like I said, my ability to create a space at my high school was my only opportunity to make it out alive. And the Hershey Bar provides that space in Norfolk. It provides a space not just of other scared teenagers, but people who've been through this decades before, who other young lesbians can turn to and say, "I'm scared." And they can say, "You're here." The Hershey Bar is an important cultural space, specifically for people who are struggling with their identity as a member of the LGBT community. Thank you.
Thank you. Vala Pauli, followed by Melissa Friedrichs.
Good evening. I am Melissa Friedrichs. I live in Suffolk, Virginia. I am a Navy veteran and an ally to the community. Do not tear the bar down. Don't do it. That was a lot. Don't do it.
Jill Gregory. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the time to talk. I have been a friend of Annette Stone and been at Hershey Bar for 33 years, off and on throughout my life. I've seen many changes through society, and that bar has been there through every little pillar to where we are today. When I heard that there was a chance of it being shut down, I just couldn't understand It's just like everyone has said, it's a safe place. It's a place for us to have good memories and to shelter each other and love each other when, you know, we didn't want to hang out with heterosexuals. That was supposed to be funny, but okay. What I'd like to say is, the Hershey Bar is history, and I can't imagine the bitterness that would happen if something was to happen to that bar. I would just like to ask that you consider continuing to keep the bar open, and if there is a change of heart for that, at least help fund the move to keep the Hershey Bar still kicking it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you.
My name is LSW James. I reside at 2021 Kenlake Place in the city of Norfolk. Any other evening, I would probably have abandoned what I was going to say and joined with those who are supporting the Hershey Bar. And the reason is because it's a lifeline. They have spoken often and eloquently, but now I've got to talk to you about a pipeline that is so dangerous that even the Navy wasn't told about the high pressure versus the other pressure that you heard the nice lady talk about. I don't mean to be impertinent, but have any of you heard about the explosion that occurred in Chesapeake? This wonderful, safe pipeline that hasn't been examined the way it fully needs to be examined exploded. They're denying it, that it exploded, that it was the gas pipeline company's responsibility, but you want to know something? I was at the safety meeting two Sundays ago, if I've got my time scheduled right. We had a community meeting, and we had experts there, and we had Joe Bouchard, bless his heart, there, who knows all about the military aspects of this pipeline. We adjourned or began to adjourn at 5:30. At 5:45, not too far down the road, a natural gas line, the very kind of gas line that we were talking about and getting information about...
Finish your thought, Ms.
...from a safety standpoint, exploded. Unfortunately, the lady of the couple who was buried in their home died. She died, I think, this past Monday. Now, somebody who has a concern such as that expressed by our good mayor, Alexander, somebody needs to get this nonsense stopped and to stop the completion of the pipeline until the safety aspects can be fully, fully examined.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So Bree Hawks, Chase Hill.
I said I couldn't hear, but I was clapping, so I apologize.
All right.
I'll do one here.
Okay.
I grew up in Foundation Park in Chesapeake. My name is Belinda Hawke, Bree Hawke, Bree the lesbian, Boss Lady Bree, whatever you know me as. I'm here also to ask for an extension for the Hershey Bar. I don't think it should be moved, though. I think historically where it's at is why it's a historical landmark. Big Navy town, of course, and it's also a huge part of the LGBT history with the military as well. Some of the same women that I've sat in there and talked to were kicked out of the military because they were in that bar, and they had a sting with them outside writing down all the license plates, you know, billing a net, rushing to get those people out of there, you know what I mean, to save their lives. Subsequently, they lost their, you know, right to be in the military. Now they sit right next to the same young ladies that are allowed to be out in the military. And this actual state is right on the cusp of doing something great by keeping the Hershey Bar open. One thing I want to say real fast, Mr. Smith, Mr. Smigel, which I love your name, by the way, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Piggio, and Mrs. Bullen, not to leave the ladies out, but I really want you to be honest with yourselves, okay? My boy Eric, where'd he go? Eric, okay. When you see a young man like that, well-spoken, right, especially for a young African American, a young black man, well-spoken and just on his business, he's actually the former president of the... Let me make sure I say it right, Sigma Pi, which is historically a white fraternity. Doesn't it make you feel good to see that young man, right? But do you really think your friends, gentlemen, are ready to see him maybe make out with his boyfriend while you're chilling at a bar drinking with your friends? Not that he's gay. I just want to use him as an example, because he is so well-spoken, and I don't want you to think that the average gay male is this, "Hey, how are you?" Whatever. It's not. It's that same dude at the gym that's big enough to take that if they wanted it type of thing. It's not what people think it is. The Hershey Bar is not what people think it is. It's vital to this community. It's vital to me. I can come into town and frequent any bar I want to, but the place that I'm going to feel safe at is right there. Facts. You know, 12th in the nation population for the LGBT community, that's this area, Norfolk and Virginia Beach, $1.7 trillion in spending money. What would happen if all the gays decided not to go to work one day in Norfolk? Probably City Hall would be pretty... Yeah, right? City Hall would be dead, too. I mean, so would the military. Yeah, I can make noise for that, actually. I mean, let's be honest about it. A place like the Hershey Bar gave a girl like me, who grew up in Foundation Park, was sold for sex by someone in their family when she was six years old. When she comes home, she still don't quite feel safe, basically, in her own neighborhood, around her own people. But the people that I've met there have given me some of the greatest relationships I've ever met in my life. And I'm talking about girlfriends, there's plenty of those. But what I'm talking about is a place that I know that a lot of these ladies have the same story as I do. Do you know that over half the women that identify as lesbians have been sexually assaulted? Do you know what corrective rape is? I ask you that, guys. And I do want you guys to stand up. And I do want you guys to stand up. Anybody who's here for the Hershey Bar, please stand up.
Thank you for coming.
Because that's what we do. We stand up for our rights, and we're going to continue to do so. And I beg you to give us an extension or make something of that spot with the Hershey Bar right there. Only you guys can do it, Mayor. Only you guys. Thank you.
Chase Hill. Chase Hill, followed by Barbara James.
Okay, there we go, I'm pretty short. Chase Hill, 1313 West 26th Street, Norfolk. I recently moved here from the middle of nowhere, I'm not going to tell you where in Florida, but basically, I can tell you right now, I'm just going to give you, I'm going to give you all something straight up. From a good standpoint of LGBT community here, and how much, how long this bar's been here, from, just honestly, from an outsider perspective, this is kind of like, almost like a monumental thing. It's been here for a very long time. And as someone from Irish background, it kind of, I kind of see where they're coming from of, something's been here for so long, they want to tear it down, because, I mean, it's going to happen in the past with stuff like that. But from, honestly, from the numbers of how much LGBT community there was here in 2014, 4.4%, number 12, highest in the nation, that's probably gone up. And just from a voting standpoint, I'm just letting it be known that if you tear this down, and you know, since nothing's going to get put there, it's just going to be an empty parking lot, from what everyone's been saying, what's been heard. From a voting standpoint, that's probably not a real good thing. I think that's not the best thing. And when voting comes, I guess, if that happens, as Teddy Roosevelt once said, y'all are probably going to realize, well, trying to, I have to reword it because it was Teddy Roosevelt, sorry about that. Basically, when you wake up in the morning and you have someone, you're looking for someone to blame to kick in the pants, you're probably not going to be walking for a month. So, that's all I got to say.
Barbara James, followed by Michael Johnston.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Barbara James. I live at 5729 Azalea Garden Road in Norfolk. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Hershey Action Coalition to ask the city for an extension on the sale and especially on the destruction of Hershey Bar. We would like this plan to be delayed until we are able to schedule meetings wherein we can have a direct conversation with each of the council members during their office hours. We've had some limited success reaching individual council members, but we have not been successful in reaching everyone. We would like to talk with each of you in a format that's neither panel-based nor limited to three minutes. We're concerned that the structure of these panel-based meetings, in which we speak to you but aren't allowed to ask questions or engage in a two-way conversation, is limiting the scope of any progress being made. In short, we would like to speak to you and not at you. The discussions that we're proposing would focus on how a compromise can be reached in which one of the remaining cornerstones of Norfolk's rich, groundbreaking LGBT history is preserved while still also allowing for new growth and development in Norfolk's Five Points area. We believe that these two concepts are not mutually exclusive. There is room for both of these ideas. Please consider an extension in this timeline and allow us to meet with you individually.
Michelle, Michelle Johnston, followed by Katrina Hopeland.
Hi, I'm Michelle. My address is 2000 Rockabye. It's in Chesapeake, Virginia. I'm here with the Hershey Bar. I am a student at ODU. I'm an IT major, and I'm bisexual, I'm queer. And this is important to everyone here tonight. Queer spaces matter because in Virginia, there is no statewide law to protect people from discrimination on the basis of their real or perceived sexual orientation or gender identity and expression in the private or public workplace. A person can legally be fired or refuse employment by any employer in Virginia, large or small, on the basis of that person's real or perceived sexual orientation or gender identity and expression. This means that a person can be fired because someone thinks that they are gay or lesbian or because they are not masculine or feminine enough in dress or demeanor. Thank you.
Katrina will be followed by Logan Kennison.
Hello, my name is Katrina Hoagland. I live in Chesapeake, Virginia. I'm here tonight in support of Hershey Bar. I'm actually going to read you a couple stats. LGBTQ youth seriously contemplate suicide at least three times the rate of homosexual youth. They are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to heterosexual youth. And suicide attempts by LGBTQ youth and questioning youth are four to six times more likely to result in injury, poisoning, or overdose that requires treatment from a doctor or nurse compared to straight peers. Safe spaces are important. People need to feel accepted like they matter. Please rethink Hershey Bar.
Thank you. Logan Kennison, followed by Kira Kinley.
Good evening, I'm Logan Kennison. I live at 10, sorry, 1045 Buckingham Avenue. I just wanted to say that while I cannot personally speak to any of the experiences that any of these good people have had while at Hershey's, I can say that this place is a fixture of the local LGBTQ community, which, as we have heard from multiple people, is frequently subject to violence and rejection on the basis of their sexual orientation or gender identity. For this reason, safe spaces such as Hershey's should be protected and preserved, especially ones of such historic significance. Demolishing Hershey's would be this council giving its tacit approval to this kind of abuse which is so rampant. Though I am not LGBTQ myself, I am Hershey's because an injury to one is an injury to all. Thank you.
Kira will be followed by Karina.
Hello, my name is Kira Kinley. I live at 1715 West 48th Street. My friend Katie couldn't be here tonight, but she asked me to tell you to preserve Hershey Bar and be proud of this piece of our city's history. This comes after Katie, our friend Laurel, and I visited Hershey Bar over the weekend to celebrate my birthday. I'm going to read you something that I wrote there at the bar. From where Katie, Laurel, and I are sitting, in the booth furthest from the dance floor, we can see a sea of older women who were here tonight to enjoy the night and each other. There's a dozen of them, and Lana and Kim start singing Imagine, and I immediately start crying. I'm struck with the image of these women twenty years ago, thirty years ago, enjoying the night and each other exactly as they are now, in this bar that might close in two weeks. People talk freely while performers talk, they visit with each other, they call across the bar and tease each other, and when a sweet, slow song comes on, they get up and hold each other and dance. We feel welcome. We feel free, and we only just got here. I've seen the shock on your faces when you thought one of us was accusing you of homophobia in past council meetings, which tells me that your hearts are in the right place. But that isn't enough now, if it has ever been. The Trump administration is attempting to narrow the definition of gender in such a way that encourages the erasure of the lives of our transgender siblings, some of the most vulnerable members of our community. There is no state law against conversion therapy, a practice we can directly link to suicide, being forced upon Virginian minors. Our hate crimes laws do not address violence based on sexual orientation or gender identity. Your heart's being in the right place is a good first step, but it isn't remotely enough in the face of these challenges to our lives and our livelihoods. I'm here to offer you some next steps to take to put your actions where your hearts are. First, get educated on LGBTQ issues and what it really means to be the allies I know you want to be. I can help with this. I offer tonight my services as one of Old Dominion University's safe space educators to teach each and every one of you. I can teach you the terms you need to know, the history you must have to understand our community, and answer any questions you have in a safe, judgment-free environment. I will be in touch with you all after this to offer my services and the certification that comes with it. Second, please maintain office hours. Many of the individuals here tonight, your constituents, have found themselves unable to speak with their elected officials because an overwhelming number of you have not made yourself available for meetings or discussions. Please trust that we will remember which of you have categorically refused to listen come reelections, but we will also remember those of you who take this opportunity to grow and listen and change. Set hours where you will be available for the people of Norfolk to talk with you and show up for them, because we will. Third, give Hershey a stay of execution. It is not to your advantage to, it is to your advan, is, sorry, is it not to your advantage to modify the terms of your contract, allowing the businesses, including but not limited to Hershey, to continue to operate until decision is made on what will be done with the land, paying rent to the city in the meantime? How is it better to raise the buildings to the ground? You failed to bring us to the table before, let the building stand and bring us to the table now. The LGBT community of Norfolk has so many ideas for how to use that space, and Hershey to bring in revenue, tourism, and safety that you all want from Five Points.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Karina, Karina Klimsak, followed by Robin Love.
Hi, my name is Karina Klimsak, and I live at 1313 West 26th Street, Unit A. I'm here to talk about Hershey Bar and the potential of keeping it and of not keeping it, learning from your mistakes as a committee on what you can do in the future to prevent future mistakes such as the destruction of this bar today. I'm here to bring up the point that it's not even just considering the LGBT, what this can do for the LGBT community, but what this can be, this can be doing for the city of Norfolk itself and the council members who stand for it, if they choose to stand for Hershey Bar. There are people who vote for you, and when they vote for you, they consider your position on issues such as this and your actions that you take such as this. I know Mrs. McClellan was at one of the lectures in support of Hershey Bar, and that shows a lot on her position. And actions others, members of the council take can also speak a lot to what they stand for. I know discussion takes place behind closed doors, and I would appreciate if more was spoken to the public on your side of this. I don't want to have any ill will towards the council or the city of Norfolk without knowing your side of things, and I wish I did know your side of things, why this decision was made without further consultation, why it's still being considered even after you know our position as the LGBT community. Thank you for having me here today.
Thank you. Robin, followed by Dominique Melito. Dominique, you're up next.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Robin Love. I live in Roland Park, neighborhood of Norfolk, and I'm here with the Hershey Action Coalition. This is my fourth time speaking on behalf of Hershey Bar and the LGBT community. Over the past several weeks, I and many others have given you emotional, economic, and socially conscious reasons for why Hershey Bar is an asset to Norfolk and the greater Hampton Roads region. Tonight, I'd like to focus on a broader implication of this issue. It's my understanding that at least some council members are supportive of developing a human rights commission. It's a commendable goal that I support. However, as I said two weeks ago, in light of these last several council meetings, it's apparent that the city is in dire need of a body that has the LGBTQ community as its sole focus. With the formation of an LGBTQ advisory board, Norfolk would join the ranks of such forward-thinking cities as Atlanta, Houston, Washington, San Antonio, and Seattle. An appointed group of citizens from various socioeconomic backgrounds who represent the entirety of Norfolk's LGBTQ spectrum, lesbians, gay men, bisexual women and men, transgender women and men, non-binary people, intersex people, and others, could help shape the city's policies and engagements with Norfolk's LGBT community and serve as a bridge between City Hall and LGBTQ citizens. Priorities could include reducing homelessness among LGBTQ youth, developing programming to support job readiness among LGBTQ youth and young adults, creating LGBTQ awareness programs for city employees, addressing and reducing hate crimes against LGBTQ citizens, working to attract and host more LGBTQ conferences and events outside of Pride, and working to attract and cultivate relationships with and support LGBTQ businesses like Hershey Bar. With the formation of an LGBTQ advisory board, Norfolk could be a leader in Virginia on LGBTQ issues and come one step closer to fully realizing its vision of strong community and quality of life for all of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Dominique, Dominique Melito, followed by Amy Milligan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dominique Melito. I reside at 4410 Segovia Court in Virginia Beach. So, I am here on behalf of the Hershey Bar. I am not a member of the Norfolk community, but I am a member of the Hampton Roads LGBTQ community. For those of you, a few of you know me on the board, that's not something I go around saying all the time. So, this is hard for me, but I feel like it's important at this point. For me, the gay bars were the first place where I felt safe and secure to be myself before I was ready to come out. I was in my twenties back then, so for those bars that, where I went to feel safe, it was the garage, the late show, offshores, privatized, charades, Charlotte's Web, and occasionally the Hershey Bar. Over the years, I felt more and more comfortable with who I was, and I began to feel comfortable coming out to my friends and colleagues. Without the support of my friends and adoptive family that I had at the gay bars, I may never have had the courage to speak my truth and be myself. What has happened over this time is that, what also has happened over this time, is that every one of the bars I mentioned earlier are gone, except one, the Hershey Bar. As a former history teacher, I can tell you that historical sites matter. At this point, the Hershey Bar is the last bar that I can say was part of my support, where I got my courage and confidence to be myself. It would mean a great deal to me and to the other members of the Hampton Roads LGBTQ community if the council could do something to preserve the Hershey Bar, renovate it, and celebrate it as a historical safe space. In these political times in which the LGBTQ community is under attack by leaders in our federal government as we speak, you have the opportunity to speak loud and strong in support of our community and to take a stand against the efforts of those who wish to take away our rights. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Amy Milligan, followed by Alyssa Moore. Are you here? Okay. Megan Morris and Hunter Nossinger. Is Hunter, Hunter here?
Megan is here.
Megan, okay, Hunter comes in, directed in French, followed by Megan, okay.
Do you want me to speak now?
Are you, Amy? Who's Amy?
Amy's actually stuck at the airport.
Okay, all right. Hunter? Okay. Are you Megan?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, you go ahead.
Hello, my name is Hunter Nossinger, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Hershey Action Coalition. The cards I have handed to you have messages written by patrons and supporters of the Hershey Bar explaining why this space needs to be saved. You're holding over a hundred cards, and that is only a fraction of the people that call Hershey Bar home. All those who are here in support of Hershey Bar, will you please stand up? The people who stand behind me are all here because we would absolutely, we'd be absolutely devastated to lose such an important piece of LGBTQ plus history. For the past few months, community members have gone to every single city council meeting pouring our hearts out and begging you to save the Hershey Bar, but you just don't listen. We've gotten up here week after week, we've brainstormed solutions, only to be completely ignored by members of city council. I've watched members of city council play on their phones as concerned citizens get up and voice their frustration. I'm drained, I'm tired, I'm sad, and I'm angry. Over the past few months, we've talked a lot about why it's important us to have specific spaces for the queer community, and honestly, the impression that I've gotten is that you really just don't care about us or our safety. I would really like to believe that you care about us and that you'll fight for our safety, but your actions say otherwise. At this point, I'm really not sure there's any way to get it through your heads that queer spaces are important and that they save lives. And no, we cannot simply go to another bar where they have specific nights for LGBTQ plus people. It's not that simple. And if you think we can just move Hershey to another location, you're missing the point. Hershey holds so much history, and yeah, initially you didn't know how important Hershey was to the queer community, but the fact that we've been up here week after week, month after month, telling you why it's so important, means you don't get to hide behind that excuse anymore. You can say you didn't know, but that doesn't change the fact that you have You can say you didn't know, but that doesn't change the fact that you haven't done a single thing to try and fix it. Saying I'm sorry I didn't know isn't good enough, and I expect so much more from my elected officials. Honestly, at this point, I just don't understand. I don't understand why queer people don't get to have history. I don't understand why we have to fight this hard for our history. I don't understand why you won't listen to us, and most of all, I don't understand why you don't care. Thank you.
Yes. Sorry, I'm Alyssa. I was called after eight weeks.
Okay.
My name is Alyssa Moore. I live in Portsmouth, Virginia, and I'm also a graduate student at Old Dominion University in the Humanities Program. I'm here today as a student and therefore a member of the Norfolk community and as a member of the queer community in support of Hershey Bar. Surveys suggest that 3% to 7% of all adults self-identify as LGBTQ. If we take the midpoint, 5% as our estimate, then approximately 45,000 people ages 25 to 64 in our region are LGBTQ. Extrapolating from this number and available evidence on LGBTQ earnings, we estimate that these working-age LGBTQ Hampton Roads residents earn more than $2 billion in income annually. LGBTQ people have historically used their wallets to make political statements. In fact, such actions took place here in Norfolk in the 1970s, 80s, and 90s as LGBTQ people presented receipts to local businesses to demonstrate our buying power and circulated gay money to call attention to our contributions to the local economy. You can capitalize on this resource, or you can ignore it. One option is obviously smarter and better for the city than the other. Thank you.
Okay, Megan.
Hello, everybody. My name is Megan Morris. I live in Virginia Beach. I am not a resident of Norfolk, but I am a graduate student at Old Dominion University in the Institute for the Communities. My focus is in gender and sexuality studies, so I feel like you're ripping the rug out from me a little bit. I'd like to say that Old Dominion University's 2016 State of the Region Report estimated that LGBTQ working-age adults' average income in Hampton Roads totaled over $2 billion, about 4.8% of total income of adults between ages 25 and 64. Much of this disposable income goes toward travel, hence the interest of tourism industries. And Virginia's Tourism Corporation data shows that LGBTQ visitors stay longer and spend more money than their non-LGBTQ counterparts. And I'd like to take a moment to like humbly ask you all to just look at me for a moment because some of you haven't looked up at us when we're speaking, and I just think that—
That's true.
I'm not accusing all of you, Mr. Smigel. I'm accusing some.
Okay. I'm reading all your postcards.
And I just—I just want to say that if you don't have the time to read the cards and you don't have the time to listen to the stories—you know all this is recorded. You can come back and look at it, but we can't get that bar back. We can't get that time back. We can't give those spaces back. So, Marie Cartier came and spoke to us, and she said something that stood very closely to me, which was that our geographies hold our history, but they also hold our future. And if we don't have a future space, we don't belong here. And if we don't belong here, where do we go? So, I'm just want to ask for—humbly—for a stay of execution, just for you to take that time to consider, and before you have to create retroactively a committee, before you destroy a bar that's directly influenced by that, please consider keeping that space there. Thank you.
Did Amy Milligan come in? Amy? No Amy, okay. Robert Pappas, followed by Kathleen Rhodes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, Council. I'm here as a parent, supporting my stepdaughter Sarah and everybody that's in this room. I've been here about 25 years. I'm a from New York area, and I was—I—initially, I was given a statement I wanted—it was supposed to read, but I just wanted to speak instead. As a parent, knowing that there's someplace to go that my daughter can go to and feel safe and can feel that she's in a world where she can learn about all of this stuff is of paramount importance. It's so difficult for people to navigate those waters and to try and figure out what is going on and how, and not feel alone and not feel abandoned. And the—I've been to the Hershey Bar multiple times myself, and I've had a fantastic time there. It was such an open, friendly, amazing place where people definitely were themselves, and it was such a wonderful thing to see. And when you think about all of the people that are here, there are doctors, there's teachers, there are students, there are scientists, there are people that work building buildings here. Every one of them is part of this community. That means so much, and they bring such wonder and amazement to all of Hampton Roads. So, a place for them to be able to go to and be themselves is so difficult to find. And as many have said before, you—and I've seen it myself—if they are in other places, there is an incredible amount of social rejection that I've seen, and it's very disturbing to me at times. And it gives me great pause because I know that my daughter is in that environment, and this is the kind of thing she might be subject to. So, being able to know at the end of the night, when I go to bed, that she is safe and with people that will keep her safe—and that's a very important thing, by the way. There are people there, as somebody else mentioned earlier, that talk to them, that because they've lived this world, they talk to them, and they keep them safe and not just give them a safe place to be. So, I would say—and I know running a city is incredibly difficult. I know the wheels that made the situation that you need to tear or possibly take down this bar are complicated, but at some point, as the leaders of the community, you can actually put on the brakes, take the pause, and say, "We're going to do this," even though it may not appear to be in the best interest of whoever is part of that. Thank you very much.
Kathleen, followed by Brandon Sharpton.
I'm Kathleen Rhodes, the Director of the Tidewater Queer History Project and a member of the Hershey Action Coalition. I'm here to talk to you about Hershey Bar, the oldest lesbian bar in Virginia and on the East Coast. In both my work as a professor and in my activism, I am a researcher of local queer history, and in considering this matter, I thought you might find it useful to see what lesbian history looks like in Norfolk. In my research, I've identified six lesbian bars that have existed in Norfolk since the 1970s, and I passed to you photos of those locations. Shirley's, Ms. Pea's, Charlotte's Web, Stella Street, and Bogey's are now an EVMS parking garage, an empty storefront, and an empty strip mall, a grassy field, and a Chinese takeout restaurant. These photos attest to the lack of a visible, recognizable lesbian existence in Norfolk. Aside from Hershey Bar, that is not—there is not a single lesbian-specific location in this city that attests to the fact that we have lived here, that we have loved, worked, and lost here, that we have taken in stray dogs, cared for men and children with AIDS, that we have helped build this city into what it is today. Lesbians are invisible without Hershey Bar. We are barely reflected in local historical accounts of LGBTQ Norfolk. We are largely absent from city leadership, but we have been here. We have made a difference here. It matters that we be remembered, that we be acknowledged, and that our lives be celebrated. We are and always have been a part of Norfolk. We need, as anyone does, a place where we can see our history reflected back to us, one that acknowledges our lives, our struggles, and our resilience. It is important to remember that this decision once enforced can't be undone. A respected colleague at ODU recently commented that we are all likely to regret the demolition of Hershey Bar, just as many of us regret the destruction of so much important African-American history on Church Street. That happened before many of you were elected to your current positions, so I imagine that you too might regret those decisions. We can't undo them. We can never recover that history for our city. Let's not repeat that mistake. Instead, let's imagine a future with Hershey Bar, a future 15 years from now when the bar will be eligible for state historical landmark status, a future 25 years from now when a young queer woman goes to the bar for the first time and hears stories about a courageous and forward-thinking group of city leaders who prevented the bar's closing. Let's imagine Five Points as a diverse and inclusive area where Hershey is bordered by community gardens, tended by residents from the neighborhood, and storefronts housing local shops and nonprofits. Let's imagine a future that is better than the past, better than the present, but not just better because the buildings are newer and shinier, better because we have preserved the past within the present. Let's make the right decision, and let's do it together. Let's save Hershey Bar.
Brandon—Brandon Sharpton, followed by Carter Simmons.
Hi, my name is Brandon Sharpton. I live at 1045 Buckingham Avenue. I'm here for Hershey Bar. They gave me a speech, but just gonna wing it. I realized I was gay when I was 10, and while—whereas my parents were—did end up being accepting. The community that I was in was not. I tried to kill myself when I was 11. I didn't get to live the most normal life because I didn't have these safe spaces. Hershey Bar is an important place in our community. I work in the library, and I work with a lot of old texts, so like our own newspaper, which isn't really that old, but it was an LGBT newspaper from the mid-'70s to the late '[1338.61][1338.61]'90s, and it talks a lot about the Hershey Bar and a lot of these other bars that are now closed. I was looking through it today just to see what I could find, and Hershey Bar was the only one that was still open. We need to keep these safe spaces open and not demolish what little LGBT history is left. Thank you.
Carter, followed by Jennifer Sivak.
My name is Carter Simmons. I live in Virginia Beach, and I would like to discuss Hershey Bar. But I'm going to start with a painting in the lobby of this building. There is a ribbon surrounding a scene of diverse faces, and it mentions creativity, it mentions acceptance, it mentions—oh, my gosh, the word. Of course, I can't find the word I need now. It mentions inclusion. That's—yeah, you found it.
Inclusiveness.
Yes, inclusiveness. My question to you is, why does our community not fall under that label? Why are we not included? We've been here telling you for months that this is a space that is extremely important to us. Can I get you guys who are here to stand up one more time? We are your neighbors. We are your doctors. We are your schoolteachers. We are the city's future, and our community deserves better than the rubble of a space that used to be safe and remnants of our own shattered history. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Good evening.
Hey, Jennifer.
My name is Dr. Jennifer Slivka. I'm a professor of English and Gender Studies and the Director of the Women's Resource Center at Virginia Wesleyan University. Tonight, I'd like to read to you a statement from a colleague of mine, Christine Pritchard, who is a resident of Hampton Roads as well, but couldn't be here tonight. "I was 23 the first time I saw a lesbian and had the epiphany that I was what—that was what I was too. But I was already engaged to be married, and that was what my parents said you were supposed to do, so that's what I did. You see, I had many gay men in my social circles that I spent time with, but I had never actually known a real-life lesbian. I didn't know it was a thing. I thought all girls thought other women were beautiful and had feelings for them, but I never had anyone I felt comfortable sharing my feelings with, so I stuffed them deep down and tried to forget they were there. After moving with my husband to North Carolina to attend graduate school, I sank into a deep depression, pretending to be fine at home but crying every time I was alone. I was 31-years-old, going to graduate school for counseling, telling my clients to live authentically, all the while pretending to be someone that I wasn't. I felt this dark hole inside of me intensifying with every day that I continued living this life. I finally begged a friend to take me to a known lesbian bar in the city. I couldn't bear my curiosity anymore. I had to know if this is who I was, if I was really a lesbian pretending to be straight because that's what society told me to do. I cried the whole way home. I had never felt such belongingness in my entire life. This realization was the catalyst for many life changes that year. Timeout may have just been a bar to others, but for most of us, it was our haven, the only safe place in a city where people called us names in public and gave us dirty looks for holding hands in public. I went through a divorce, and I really leaned on this newfound community of women. I spent many hours in that bar in the following years. Back in those days, you became a member, and members had keys to get in. There had been attacks on the patrons, and locking the doors was the only way we could feel safe. I can't express to you the sense of community that we experienced in that bar. The friendships I made lasted over 15 years. I was my true self for the first time in my life. I met my wife 12-years ago in that bar and fell in love on the spot. That was the only place in the city where we could go on a date, to spend time with each other without worrying about people staring at us or being yelled at for being gay. We could play pool or laugh with friends. We felt safe. We attended birthday parties, baby showers, retirement parties at that bar. We mourned death of friends and supported each other through rough times. Last month, my wife and I celebrated 10 years of marriage. We have three girls together, a 14-year-old, and twin six-year-olds. We have a house, and jobs, and kids, and pets, and friends, and built this amazing life together. If it weren't for Timeout, a bar very much like Hershey, none of this would have happened. Places like the Hershey Bar change lives. It provides sanctuary where we can be ourselves, we can build community, and lasting friendships. Everyone deserves a place like that, a safe place where you know you and the love you feel sheltered from the world that doesn't always love or value you back. Both Christine and I asked the city council for an extension at the very least, and we really hope that you keep the bar going as an important historical place, but also a safe place for the LGBT community of Hampton Roads. Thank you."
Danielle Stern, followed by Sarah Stump.
Danielle Stern, I'm a resident at 813 Mantio Street. I'm here representing as a queer resident of Norfolk for Hershey Bar, as well as a professor in the Department of Communication at Christopher Newport University and the Faculty Advisor for Seeing New Spectrum. I visited Norfolk for the first time almost 15-years ago. My friends took me to Hershey Bar. We sang karaoke on a Sunday night, and I felt at home. Hershey was the first bar that I visited that I could just relax and not feel that I was hiding when I held hands with my girlfriend at the time. A few years later, in 2009, I moved to Norfolk. I cannot imagine a Norfolk without Hershey Bar. The town I moved here was from a small Wisconsin town where I had to drive 45-minutes to Madison to find a social space where I felt at home and included. Here, I am privileged and grateful to have a welcoming, safe space such as Hershey Bar in the city that I call home. As a professor of communication and gender, I cannot express enough the value of spaces for community and connection to people who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, queer, and transgender. But let's not mince words. Hershey Bar is a space for LGBTQ folks, but it is especially welcoming to lesbians and queer women. Please do not lose sight of that important status. Even though I am grateful that Norfolk has become more welcoming to LGBTQ people, we cannot ignore the role of the iconic historic space of Hershey serving us. Moreover, city council decisions communicate so much to our citizens, especially in a political and cultural climate that is increasingly hostile to the LGBTQ community. that is increasingly hostile to the LGBTQ community. The powerful voices of our local leaders matter, as do the voices of our most vulnerable citizens who seek haven in spaces like the Hershey Bar when public spaces overwhelmingly exclude them. I implore members of the Norfolk City Council to keep Hershey Bar open, to reconsider your options, and include more voices in that conversation. Thank you for the space to speak that.
Vala Folly, following Sarah Stumpf. Vala Folly, following Sarah Stumpf.
Oh, hi. Um, yeah. Also, like, before I get started, it's really, really nice to hear a lot of older women, who like women, talking about, like, just hope for the future. Oh, sorry, heavy stuff. I really struggled, oh, sorry, I struggle all the time. I'm going to give you my address. I am Sarah Stumpf. I live at 2801 Colonial Avenue in Park Place. And I really struggled to find the words to say tonight. I didn't know how I could defend the existence of my community in three minutes. I didn't know how I could come up with a plan or ask for an extension or plead for a chance of just anything, just like crumbs. I didn't know how I could lay out how, like, the vision statement stated on the City Council website didn't seem to have been met. There's all this talk of hope and acceptance and that everyone's really neighborly here in Norfolk. And it pretty much is in Park Place. It's really nice. We're not like Ghent or Colonial, a place where they call the cops on you if you walk through. But the point I'm trying to get to is queer spaces are lifesaving. Their homes, they normalize and protect the LGBTQ community and foster a sense of understanding with the surrounding community. If we're public, if we're out and we're safe, we're normalized, there's not so much danger just walking to get groceries. Without spaces like the Hershey Bar, I wouldn't be here. I'm 23, and my current goal is to make it to 25. I'm just trying to hold on to hope. And I'm keeping a promise to one of my best friends who was here tonight, means the world to me. And it's just really hard to hear that there are kids younger than me who went through this and like, that are still going through this. But there's so much hope that there's the older community who, it's been invisible. I grew up mostly in Chesapeake, and there's nothing out there. It's just a lot. And I'm just respectfully trying to ask the council to treat us like people, to see us as people. I know we've been here a bit. I work two jobs. I get up at 5:00 in the morning. I'm standing here, it's way past my bedtime. It's just a lot. And I just want to make all my points without tripping over things. It's sad, it's disappointing, we're all angry, we're all upset. And I'm trying to be respectful because I want to play into respectability politics. And I want to not ruin stuff by just being angry all the time. But it's hard to hold on to hope when we've been here for months. People are saying the same thing over and over again. We're asking for an extension. We're asking to be heard. We're asking to be understood, not spoken over or ignored or be given useless platitudes. Because if you haven't lived it, you don't really get it. And I'm just asking for some consideration. Thank you.
Lisa Zeminski, followed by Nathan Workman.
Hi, Lisa Zeminski. I reside at 321 West 31st Street in Norfolk. I'm here on behalf of Hershey Bar. "The first step in liquidating people is to erase its memory, destroy its books, its culture, its history. Then have somebody write new books, manufacture a new culture, invent a new history. Before long, the nation will begin to forget what it is and what it was. The world around it will forget even faster. I'm here because I know how important it is to be seen. I'm here because I know that it is the job of this community and its allies to demand representation, since we cannot find it in you. I'm here because I'm still that scared little girl that well into my adolescence and adulthood never truly thought I belonged anywhere until I went to my first gay space. It was in those spaces and those faces and those moments that I was able to not only identify, but feel identified, not only define identity, but feel identified. It was in those spaces I was able to be my authentic self and where I saw others' expression as colors in the persona I was so desperately trying to craft so that I could go out into the world more comfortable in this skin, in this identity, in this body. It was in those spaces that my queerness, my gayness, was safe. Safe. It was safe. Shame on your inability to see that we need these spaces. Shame on your feeble attempts at gentrification, for your tax breaks, for your politics. Hershey is more than a bar. It is more than your tired parking lot. It is more than your blatant disconnect from some of the most vulnerable and marginalized constituents, your constituents, your voters, the ones you are supposed to represent. Us. Look at us. It represents all of those out there longing to belong to a space, a place, a time, a moment, or something to call their own. This bar is ours. These places are ours. You may close it down, but you won't silence us. Thank you."
Nathan will be followed by Sarah Huestead.
My name's Nathan Workman. I live in Chesapeake. I am also the ODU Gay Cultural Studies Graduate Research Assistant and part of the Norfolk community. And I previously lived in Norfolk for three years at West 41st Street, just down the road from MJ's. I thank you for getting to the W's, Workman. I have a particular place of privilege to be able to have a community at the university that a lot of people behind me don't because they don't have the money to go there. This is a working-class issue. And I think Workman should tell you about it. So that's why I'm here, and I have something to read. Mayor Alexander and the City Council, "This month of October is LGBTQ History Month. It is a time to celebrate and reflect upon what the community has accomplished as a whole and where we need to go in the future, with also taking time to remember the loved ones we've lost in honor in their history. Recently, you signed the Mayors Against Discrimination pledge, which solidifies a promise to prevent LGBTQ housing, employment, and public accommodation discrimination in Norfolk. Some of your constituents find this act to be nothing more than political theater, especially in light of the forced closing of Hershey Bar. Mayor Alexander and the City Council, "Your collective actions have contradicted the purpose of this pledge. The LGBTQ citizens of Norfolk and the patrons of Hershey Bar deserve more than an empty promise. We are here more than a well-timed photo op. Since October is LGBTQ History Month, I ask how you would want to remember this. And I also call attention to the optics that not many gay white men have come to these meetings to support this cause. And I think that's a larger conversation we have, but something we can start and an opportunity here that the council can integrate Hershey Bar into the plans for Five Points area. There's, I live in Chesapeake. There's so many people who come to Norfolk because there's nothing else around here. You have so much the city offers to the entire Hampton Roads community. And I really think you need to consider that, moving forward, to stay and allow more time for all of us to talk to you, organize, and tell you our points and our stories. And come to this podium, hearts open, open minds, open futures, open opportunity. Thank you."
Sarah, Sarah Huestead.
Hello. My name is Sarah Huestead. Normally, I try and like mask how sad and angry I am with a joke, but I'm not going to do that today. I'm really tired of coming up here. I'm super tired in general. I work a lot in activism, so I'm used to feeling defeated about things. And I've had a lot of reasons to feel defeated in the past two years. But there's something about the Hershey Bar that feels so much more personal, that stings a little bit more. And maybe it's because we, after we have poured our hearts out over and over repeatedly to City Council, we were told that you are not, in fact, homophobic, that you just didn't think about it. And I believe that. I believe that you didn't think about the LGBT citizens who frequent the Hershey Bar. But maybe it's because there have been 21 official, but probably a lot more unofficial reports of transgender people have been murdered this year. Maybe it's because I work specifically with transgender people who have lost everything, their homes, their families, their jobs, for living their authentic lives. And then I hear, come in here and hear stories about how Hershey is home. And I believe it, and I feel it in my heart and my soul. And I have spaces like that, even though it's not particularly the Hershey. And I understand that the pain that everyone in this room feels. I deserve to be able to go back and look at the history that my city holds, specifically the history that queer people have made in my city. And I don't deserve that because I'm an American or because I'm a young person or because I live in Norfolk. I deserve it specifically because I am gay. No other reason. Gay people get to have a history that they can look back on and see and touch that is specific to them as well. Queer people are some of the bravest people I will ever meet. It takes courage just to walk out the door, to go to work, to hold our partner's hand, to do anything that a straight person does. And I cannot imagine the immense bravery that it would have taken to walk into the Hershey Bar in 1983. Those lives should be honored, and they should be celebrated for paving the way for LGBT rights that we have today. We will remember this long after you have forgotten. We will feel the effects of this loss long after you have moved on. And we will drive past that empty parking lot that may or may not be a CVS in five years and remember not to vote for City Council members that did not fight with us. I will not stop speaking at these City Council meetings. I will keep speaking because there are people who we have lost who can no longer speak. Trans women have a life expectancy of 35-years-old. 35-years-old. There are people who are outed by the police searching the parking lot of Hershey's, who subsequently lost their jobs, their homes, their families, everything. I will keep speaking because there are LGBT youth who have killed themselves because they had nowhere to go, because they did not know that there were others like them or that they would be accepted anywhere. I will keep speaking because there will be LGBT youth who have nowhere to go, and they will look for a lesbian bar that they can go to. And they will see that Hershey's was torn down for no reason. And who knows what will happen to them. You have a chance to change the course of this. And I really, really hope that you take this opportunity to protect and preserve LGBT spaces, starting with the Hershey Bar.
We're going to adjourn. Ms. Sarah was the last speaker. But let me express to all of you that we hear you, we see you. We listened since June. And for, we don't want anyone to leave here to think that we don't care. We're not, we don't have compassion. You don't know our story. And if you have a chance to meet with us individually, you would be shocked about our story, our family members, who are members of the LGBTQ community, lived experience. We want safe places in the city. We want communities in this city. You know, I could go on and tell you my story, but I won't tell you my story tonight. But I will say this. In 1949, a young woman was born in Norfolk, Virginia. And in 1966, she got pregnant. But she had to leave because she was a lesbian. She went to New York City, where she lived. She had to come back to register her son in public schools in Norfolk. Her mother was a secretary of a church. Her father was a clerk of the church. But she could not live here in the city of Norfolk because she was gay. She died at age 36. Today, her son is the mayor of the city of Norfolk. We care, and every last one of us have a story that's unique. We will find a solution. We don't know if this solution can be savage, but we will find a solution. We believe that there should be a community, inclusive, a diverse community, where all people in Norfolk can live and worship and play and learn and work and be free to live with whomever they love. So I thank you for coming. I know Andrea may want to have something to say, but we thank you for coming.
I just want to say that I've grown a lot in this experience. I've learned a lot. And thank you for educating me and for educating us. And I know that my colleagues have listened. I hope we can find a way to save the Hershey Bar. What I learned was that it is historic. And Norfolk has a history of piling down a lot of our historic things. And here's an opportunity to save this. I don't know if we can, but I hope my colleagues will try and find a way. And I believe that we have come a long way. And we've had some very honest and frank discussions amongst ourselves about how we need to continue to do even better to serve the LGBTQ community. Because you are a big part of us, and you make us special. And the fact of the matter is, so many of you don't even live in Norfolk who are here, talks, it just speaks volumes about what Norfolk is. And so I don't really have anything else to say because I'm emotional. But thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing your stories. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for sharing yours.